Okay, sounds good. All right. And so again, for the record, I'll be recusing myself.
Mr. Shoemaker called me an hour ago.
Okay, I'll let you talk to Dustin about it, but I am going to leave because just for the record, I've worked with Mr. Shoemaker before this item came to the council on other ways to resolve this issue. And so I'm pretty closely linked to it. And so I do have a bias. I would not be able to make a good faith effort to do that. So I will hand over the gavel to the vice mayor, and then I will recuse myself for the adjournment of the closed session. And I know that Dustin can address Bruce contacting people. So.
Unless you feel that it's going to be.
I'm waiting till you get done, so I can.
Cool. Yep. All right, we will reconvene the open session of the city council of the city of Dunsmere and report back from closed session. Just to recap, myself and council member Chrysler have recused ourselves from this item. And so I will move over to the vice mayor for the report out of closed session.
Reaction was given to that one.
All right, thank you. And then it's been requested prior to going into special presentation. Well, I guess it is an announcement. We would like to have a moment of silence in remembrance of Pearl Harbor. Today is Pearl Harbor Day. And so if you'll please just give us a couple of moments.
God bless them all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into our special presentations for the evening with item six A, which is the recognition of Dale Faulkner of the Mount or the, excuse me, the Dunsmere Recreation Parks District. Proclamation to the city of Dunsmere declaring honoring Dale Faulkner, whereas Dale Faulkner was a dedicated employee of the Dunsmere Parks and Recreation District for 18 years, and whereas Dale Faulkner served as the maintenance supervisor for the Dunsmere Parks and Recreation District, and whereas Dale Faulkner was a cherished community member of the city of Dunsmere who spent his time serving the public through his position, as well as his volunteerism with his family in the community to make South Siskiyou a wonderful place to live. And whereas Dale's impact on this community cannot be adequately measured by the words in this proclamation, nor by his many years of service, but we feel the loss of his presence deeply as we continue our lives. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Juliana Lucchese, Mayor of the city of Dunsmere, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby celebrate the wonderful life of Dale Faulkner and encourage the communities to support Dale's family and friends during this time, presented the seventh day of December 2023. And I don't know if Mr. Rodriguez, if you'd like to say anything on behalf for Dale.
Yeah. First of all, personally, thank you very much for this opportunity and this the city acknowledging Dale. Is why Patty is unable to make it tonight. She's not feeling well, and she's really not ready to come out to make any comments, but she sends her best. She thanks the city again. She's grateful and blessed by the contributions we had for her and her family. And so it was a very special time with Dale. And so on behalf of the family, thank you so much. But I want to read a note from our board chairman, Kate O'Grady. She's not able to be here. Three of our board members are here. So if it's okay, let's read that. Okay, on behalf of the Dunsmere Rec and Park District Board and Staff, I would like to take this or thank the Dunsmere City Council for taking the time this evening to acknowledge longtime park employee Dale Faulkner. Dale worked for us for 18 years and was a dedicated and hardworking employee who will be greatly missed. We all have known Dale, hard worker for these days. We all know how hard Dale worked these for these for the district to find employees who are willing to work and go the extra mile and find pride in their work. Dale will be a hard, hard act to follow. And we are very grateful for the legacy that he leaves here in Dunsmere. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
He was our friend. I just now found out about this. So I didn't know if there's anything I can personally do for his family. He's still talking about his desk. He's not a hard act to follow. He was the show. They better bring their own show.
Thank you. Moving on to item six B, which is Union Pacific Railroad Rail Yard Oil Spill Response Cleanup Update. So for those of you who may not know, we do have the rail cleanup project that's occurring on the rail yard. It is a cleanup of engine oil that has been spilled over time on the rail yard. We are one year into about a three-year project for that. So what they're doing is they are excavating the contaminated soil, taking out the oil, and they are shipping it out to Utah. And they're replacing it with a special type of sand and a aqua barrier, which is kind of like a clay barrier on the yard. So just giving an update on that, they will be closed from December 23 through January 2 for the holiday season. Currently, they're completely done with trucking from the yard to the south side of the city for the rest of the winter season. And they're now moving into winterization of the facilities. So they will begin to see more sand being dropped off to put in. They'll be covering the current oil that's still exposed. And then they will be the last item they will do is they will remove the wildlife barrier around that once it's safe for that. They will also be shoring up the shoreline of the Sacramento River. As part of the project for winterization, they'll be installing a temporary burn in case of heavy flooding events for the 100-year flood plain. So it's a 10% storm chance. And so they'll be doing that over the next couple of months. But so far, it'll mainly just be trucking in new sand to the facility. So is there any questions on the Union Pacific Rail Yard Cleanup Project? All right, seeing none, we'll move into item number seven this evening, which is general public comment. This is the time in our meeting where members of the public may approach the podium. We ask that you state your name for the record. And this is the time to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, to address us on items in the special presentation and announcements, or items on our consent agenda. So tonight, we do have a number of items on the consent agenda. 11A, check register for November 10 through December 1, 2023. Item 11B, which is approval of the 2024 schedule for the Dunsmere City Council meetings. 11C, approval of temporary street closure for December 9, Candles in the Canyon, Christmas Tree Lighting, and 11D, local transportation fund claim form to obtain and reserve funds. So if you would like to comment on any of those items, or an item that is not on the agenda, you may approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. And if you are on Zoom, you may go to the reactions tab and raise your hand, and you will also have three minutes. Are you going?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, my name is Peter Arth. I live in the historic district. I have great hopes for the city of Dunsmere and the city reclaiming the historic district and reinventing it into a viable economy. And it would be nice if buildings were able to talk, but buildings can't talk. They're just buildings. They're bricks and cement and wood and so on. But with great fanfare, when I was on the city council, we enthusiastically adopted the vacant and abandoned building ordinance years ago, with the city attorney saying, once you do this, you have all the tools you need to save the historic buildings of the historic district. And as someone who lives on Sacramento Avenue, I go by the Dunsmere Hotel every day.
I think it might be this one.
And if you were situated where I was, you would go by on Sacramento Avenue, and you would see on the top floor of the historic Dunsmere Hotel, four windows, three of them absolutely open to the weather after a rather significant fire in the hotel. The fourth one boarded up to no effect. But I'm telling you, as beautifully built as the older buildings are in our community, they cannot take winter after winter of snow and rain coming through those windows percolating down the floors. And why, simply to me, this is not a topic for any of you. You see it, you know it. You know, we could talk about the House of Glass or the House of Shards, but to do anything about it is just too big a reach for this group. To do anything about losing the several buildings that make up the heart of downtown Dunsmere, how is it possible that you're going to sit by and let that building either catch fire again, or be simply ruined by the passage of winters destroying the interior of the building? At some point, it will not be economic to save the Dunsmere Hotel. Do you think about that? Do you care about it? I'm hoping in 2024, after the several years of passing the ordinance, I'm in favor of law enforcement. I think laws are there for a purpose. They regulate how we operate in society. Why is the city sitting so passively, letting vacant abandoned buildings fall apart? Thank you.
All right, and we do have a hand raised on Zoom. So Allison Lashewski, please go ahead.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Allison Lashewski, 533-5344 River Avenue. A long, long time ago, in the land of Israel, the most special place for the Jewish people was a temple in Jerusalem. The temple contained many beautiful objects, including a tall, golden menorah. Unlike menorahs of today, this one had seven branches. Instead of being lit by candles or by light bulbs, this menorah burned oil. Every evening, oil would be poured into the cups that sat on top of the menorah. The temple would be filled with shimmering light. At the time of the Hanukkah story, a man named Antioch ruled over the land of Israel. "I don't like these Jewish people," declared Antioch. "They're so different from me. I don't celebrate Shabbat or read from the Torah, so why should they?" Antioch made many new and cruel rules. "No more celebrating Shabbat. No more going to the temple. And no more Torah," he shouted. He told his guards to go to the temple and make a mess. They brought mud and stones and garbage into the temple. They broke furniture, and they knocked things down, and they smashed the jars of oil that were used to light the menorah. Antioch and his soldiers made the Jews feel sad and angry. A Jewish man named Judah Maccabee said, "We must stop Antioch. We must think of ways to make him leave the land of Israel." At first, Judah's followers called the Maccabees. They were afraid. "Judah," they said, "Antioch has so many soldiers. His soldiers carry big weapons, and he uses huge elephants to fight his battles. How can we, the Jews, fight against him?" Judah said. "If we think very hard and plan carefully, we'll be able to defeat him." It took a long time, but at least, at last, the Maccabees chased Antioch and his men out of Israel. As soon as Antioch and his soldiers were gone, the Jewish people ran to Jerusalem to clean their temple. What a mess! The beautiful menorah was gone, and the floor was covered with trash, broken furniture, and pieces from the shattered jars of oil. The Maccabees built a new menorah. At first, they worried that they wouldn't be able to light their new menorah, but they searched and searched until at least they found one tiny jar of oil, enough to light the menorah for just one evening. The Maccabees knew that it would be at least eight days before they can get more oil, but they lit the menorah anyways. And to their surprise, this little jar of oil burned for eight days. The Jewish people could not believe their good fortune. First, their small army had chased away Antioch's large army, and now the tiny jar of oil had lasted for eight whole days. The Jewish people prayed, and they thanked God for this miracle of Hanukkah. And with every Hanukkah candle we light, we're reminded that we must always work to find the light in the darkness.
Allison, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the council on items not on the agenda, on the special presentation, or on our consent agenda?
I'm Steven Crash Viegas, 4221 Siskiyou Avenue, also known as the House of Glass. And I heard Peter Arth speaking about the older buildings, historic buildings falling apart. I don't believe that the House of Glass is a historic building, or would qualify. But that's not why I'm here. Ever since we purchased this place in 20, three years ago, we've been absolutely straightforward about what we were going to do, what we wanted to do. There's a message on the front of the front gate. It's got a telephone number. It's got an email address to be reached anytime by anybody. I love, I don't think that what to resurrect that property as what it was before, which is our intention, can be done without agreement at the same. Now recently, not recently, I'd say exactly December 18, our family has fallen apart on some very hard family crisis. We've been chasing it since. Very hard to be here. Okay. And we've been keeping the place secure with power and water. And I, I've shared with everybody, we have some caretaker there to watch the place in the nighttime, make sure it doesn't get vandalized, make sure there's no trespassing. Well, we had power, and we had water sources. We've been trying to get through to the city to discuss these things. The city manager hasn't been responding since before his vacation. I got emails in, I got telephone calls in. I wanted to discuss what we were experiencing in all transparency, but we got ghosted. All right? And it's continuing. I've sent to the water department emails, hey, we'd like to do this, hey, we'd like to do that. Ghosted. Now, I can understand the frustration with property owners here. Ghosted. So we're here, we're open, we're down. We want to bring this place back. And I don't feel bad about my family falling apart, or Dunsmere family. Okay, I get that. That's okay. I'll get past it. But the day that we got that news, we were moving down here to be here full force. And now, without anybody reciprocating our efforts to have a conversation, please, we're asking, we're here. I'd love to have a sit down with all of you and say, hey, what I can and cannot do. We are not big developers. We are, we are not here to promise, coming in with our big money and big plans. No, we want to, we want to get investors. We want to find out, hey, what does this town really need? I have a good idea, but I can't throw down. These are the plans. And if I don't have the plans, I don't get water, we don't get power, and that's what's happened.
Thank you. That is your time.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments on items that are not on the agenda, on special presentation and announcement, or on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into item number eight, which is council and staff comments. And so we'll begin with Sergeant Ortiz today. Do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Reeve.
All right, Mayor and Council. So over the last couple of weeks, we've been working on code enforcement, code enforcement, snow preparation. And that's pretty much it. It's been a lot of, as you can see out in the community, we've been doing a lot of vegetation management, street sweepers, probably, I don't know how many loads it's taken. I think we have five massive dumpster loads of leaves. And so yesterday fared pretty well. And in the wet weather, we have three new staff members in Public Works, with the fourth one getting ready to start. So they got some education in what water does when it gets plugged up. So we, but we kept all the drains open yesterday, and city's looking good.
All right. Is there any questions for City Manager Reeve? Seeing none, we'll move into council member comments. And we'll start on this side with Councilmember Clarino.
I'm gonna keep it short this evening, going into the holidays. I hope everyone has a happy holiday. And then also just everyone hope for snow at slightly higher altitudes than town. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Brian.
I just wanted to recognize one of the public comments regarding the downtown, the need to enforce the vacant and distressed building ordinance. I just want to reach out to all the people who are investing their hard-earned money, or their precious time on this earth, helping our downtown revitalize. You're not alone. We have a downtown revitalization effort underway. Cosmont is running it. The city's undergoing its best effort at this sort of work, comprehensive work. So please stay tuned to that. We do appreciate you. We do demand that people keep their buildings in a safe manner and keep them open. But we also want to be supportive of anyone who's investing their precious resources in this town and thank them. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to kind of give everyone a heads up on what'll be going on on Saturday. The committee for Candles in the Canyon has joined together with the second Saturday. So that's why we're having this on the second Saturday, to kind of bring both of them together with energy. The committee has been extremely active, and I'm really excited about all the work that's been done. And if you walk around downtown, there are Christmas lights up. We've got people going out and working with the businesses to get them decorated for Christmas. Saturday morning, from 8:30 to 10:30 at the Catholic Church, that looks at the building, the Catholic building there?
The Hall.
The Hall, the Catholic Hall, 8:30 to 10:30 pancake breakfast, holiday pancake breakfast. Santa will be there. And then I think it's at 10 o'clock, there will be something going on at the Be Kind Bakery, and kids and all kinds of activities there. Later on, we'll have choir going around singing. And then as far as downtown is concerned, as was on the agenda, the consent agenda, we have the street blocked off from basically right here by Belknap, up to just past Pine Street, and then also at the end of Pine Street. So at 5:30, we're asking people to come to the Belknap Fountain. There'll be candles. People can carry little electric candles. There'll be caroling that'll go down to the tree. And once the people get down there, we get the word, and Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be driven down to the tree in a red Tesla. And so it'll be caroling and singing there. There will be propane fire pits. They wanted to kind of bring up the whole idea of this being kind of the traditional look at Christmas. They're trying to bring on a Christmas like we haven't had for a long time in Dunsmere. So I'm encouraging everyone to make an effort to get there and to support it. And I think you'll all enjoy the whole experience. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Chrysler.
I'm still in shock over Dale. Just, I really want to do that. I want to reiterate what Bruce says. Come out Saturday morning, 8:30, have breakfast with Santa. And then five, what? Five o'clock? Five thirty, come out, and Santa will be singing songs, and join him in Pizza Factory. Bring the kids down. It's all about the kids. We also got a concert, community concert. Does anybody know the date on that? Really? Really? Trust me, there's a concert coming. It's gonna be at, oh, nothing is church?
Monday, the 18th.
Monday, the 18th. You wouldn't happen to know what time. Really impressed me.
Now you're really impressed. Probably six or seven.
This is one of the, this is one of the neatest things that I have experienced since I moved to Dunsmere, is coming to watch the choir. This year is going to be different because you're not going to have Louie Douie sitting up in there. But they always manage to do an outstanding job. Mike Wright puts on a great show. And these guys are out there practicing for weeks, trying to put on a show for us. So I encourage everybody to go support them and go out. And it's worth it. It's really good. So, and I apologize for my parents, but I'm taking the Catholic Church. So I came from work to here, because I promised they would have Mass on Sunday in a new Christian church. I'm tired of this. I apologize, but.
It's okay. All right, thank you. On that note, before you go to that concert, or after you go to that concert, we do have a public event for our housing element. This is the city's housing plan for the next eight years. I put up a stink about two meetings ago on not having enough public participation in it. So we, on December 18, from 6 to 8 PM here in the council chambers, we will have another opportunity for members of the public to address our consultants who are putting that plan together. putting that plan together on any type of housing issue that you see in the city, housing opportunities. You can talk about short-term rentals if you want, you know, assisted living. We spoke about a lot of these the last couple of meetings that you can get recordings of. But again, you know, wanting to make sure that we have ample public participation in that housing plan. And it's a housing plan that we're gonna follow and need and hopefully meet the needs of the city. So you'll see these flyers up around the city limits and getting people to come to that.
Six to what?
Six to 8:00 PM. So even if you can jump in, give a comment really quick and then go over to the concert, that would be great. Just trying to make sure that we give people ample time to give input on that project. Outside of that, I've just been meeting with a couple of different project funders the last couple of days. Council member Brian and I met with the Ford Family Foundation last week, just kind of looking at what their priorities are for the next couple of years. And one of the things we did talk about was economic development and supporting development within the city for entrepreneurs, business owners, as well as helping out some of our historic buildings. So trying to work on other avenues to fund that. Other than that, any other questions, comments?
I just have one, I forgot. I'd like to thank the Mount Chasse's Keep Park for donating the lovely 30-foot-plus Christmas tree and the mountain medics for transporting it down to the town. And of course, thanking our Public Works crew for hoisting the tree up.
Council member Deutsch.
Two quick things. First of all, with the pancake breakfast, free pancakes for any family, parents and the kids, free pancakes. The other thing I want to bring up is I would like to maybe get a meeting about that House of Glass thing and talk to you about that. And I know you're friends with Lynn, so I'll work with Lynn to make that happen.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move into committee reports. Did any committees meet in the interim from last meeting?
The only thing I met with was Turkey.
All right, so we had no committee reports. We'll move into item number 10, which is approval of the minutes for November 16th, 2023. Any discussion?
Ma'am, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 16th.
Is there a second? I'll second. So a motion by council member Kaisler, second by mayor Luke Casey, all those in favor of approving the minutes for November 16th, 2023 as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We'll move into item number 11, consent agenda. So tonight we have four items. The 11A, check register for November 10th through December 1st, 2023. 11B, approval of the 2024 schedule of Dunsmere City Council meetings. 11C, approval of temporary street closure, December 9th, candles in the canyon, Christmas tree lighting. And 11D, local transportation fund claim form to obtain and receive funds. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda or discussion?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, we'll open up in discussion, one second. Motion by council member Kaisler to adopt the consent agenda as presented, second by council member Brian. Did you have a question? Okay.
I need to, the motion is on.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Move us into item number 13, because we have no public hearings tonight, which is old business, Hope, Apple, Branstadter, Street, Pavement Overlay Bid Acceptance. City manager Reeve.
All right, so we recently put out to bid Hope, Apple and Branstadter for the, our R-Tip project or STP, I don't remember which project it is. Anyway, we were allocated $217,000. The bid came in at $234,916. We kind of knew that it was gonna come in over, so we had purposely kind of parsed out the, parsed out some of the elements so that we could kind of pick and choose. We had the base, the base bid, and then we had a number of alternates. And so after going through with pace engineering and them negotiating with the contractor, the new combined bid amount is $201,799. And the remainder of that $217,000 will be to cover administrative and construction administration and any contingencies, but we don't foresee any of those coming up.
Thank you. Are there any questions for city manager Reeve before we open for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. If you'd like to come and approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom, you'll have three minutes to make a comment on the Hope, Apple, Branstadter, Street, Pavement Overlay Bid Acceptance. That's a very long title. All right, seeing no public comments, we'll close public comment and move into discussion. Is there any discussion? Council member Kaisler.
If you have a road motorcycle on Branstad, this is the happiest day there is for a motorcycle. Kidneys can now be at peace. So I appreciate it very, very, very much.
I move to accept the bid for 2023 pavement overlay project in the amount of $201,799.80 with construction administration and contingency and a project total of $217,000.
And I will second that.
There's a motion by council member Deutsch, second by council member Kaisler. Any other discussion on the motion at hand?
Just how this construction management can be spent? Can I go towards staff management internally or does it have to be there?
It's, it's, the construction management component is typically, it's the onsite inspector and then if we have to do any testing of the asphalt and stuff like that, that's how that's normally, we normally budget for like substantially higher than that on a percentage basis, but.
Yeah. There probably will be contingencies that use it up, but say there is money left over, what happens?
There won't be any money left over. I can, I can, we're, we're, we're literally like, we're right there on, on the cusp. We, we did a lot of cutting and negotiation. So basically Dennis will step in and place once the money runs out to handle the inspections and oversight.
Cool, thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Justin.
All right, seeing no other discussion, we'll move into, oh, did you have a comment? Okay. We'll move into a roll call vote, please, Wendy.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Motion carries. There you go. So we'll move into our new business items tonight. So we'll start with 14A, which is the Public Works Building Lease for Winter. City manager Reeve.
Mayor and council, we have been working with Castella Fire District. They have recently placed under contract and is in Estro. The building located just to the north of their current station down on Craig's View Drive. They have offered it to us basically for their cost at $1,300 a month in order to get us through the winter while we're in the process of building the Public Works Building. And so I have a lease here to basically take possession after they get, receive possession. So hopefully here in the next three to four weeks.
They're moving the new one and the old one is where we're going to do this?
No, they're not, they're not moving. They're acquiring the building in the same parking lot as them. So down in Craig's View Drive, they have their station and then the building to the north of that came up for sale and, or they are purchasing that and they're gonna, it's going to ultimately be used for maintenance of fire engines. And so it's a, it's a decent shop and it'll, it'll provide us a place undercover to do some maintenance when we need to this winter.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I know that there's not exactly all that easy of a way to get down to Craig's View Drive. Were there any concerns waiting to have equipment that needs to be maintenance, getting them down there and back?
Well, yes, and that's part of our discussion on where we're, we're starting to migrate a lot of our operations down to the treatment plant for the winter, including, well, staff, all staff reports down there currently. And so it's just across the bridge from there. And all of the snow plows will be located down that way as well. So, yeah, I mean, is there concern? Yeah, we have lots of concerns, but I can't just throw a roof up.
We prefer to do maintenance in the building rather than on the side of the street.
That, yes, and so do, so do all of our employees. And so, yeah.
Is that green going down there or is it orange?
Nah, it's not green. It's tan, isn't it? I think it's tan.
Can't green whatever.
Seal Richardson Building. Yeah, the one down there right, right up front, twice. Yes. Okay. That's pretty good setup, Bill.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions before I open this for public comment? Seeing none, if you'd like to make a public comment, you may approach the microphone or you may raise your hand on Zoom and you'll have three minutes to address the council on the potential lease for Public Works Building for winter. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, move into discussion. Any other discussion?
Take what we can get.
Would you like to make the motion then?
I make the motion if we, I don't have the numbers yet. We have a motion to accept the proposal to that.
I move we authorize city manager to enter into a lease with the Castella Fire District.
All right, there's a motion by council member Brian. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by council member Kaisler.
Also a request to adjustment of the budget.
Yeah.
And the budget.
Yeah, with the corresponding $7,800 budget adjustment.
All right, so there's a friendly motion amendment.
Where is that in the budget? What fund?
It'll, it'll cover, it'll be the gamut. We'll.
And some snow.
Some snow, okay.
Yeah, yeah, about, about 50% snow removal, sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
Okay. All right, seeing no other discussion on the motion at hand, we'll move into a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Motion carries. All right, we'll move into 14B, which is selection of financial management software. Finance director Michelson.
Oh, boy.
I know.
No. All right, so we currently use Fund Balance from Tyler Technologies. That software is going the way of the dodo, sorry, dodos. But, so we're looking at going to a cloud-based, web-based system. I've reached out to five companies, three of them have contacted me back. I've been in long discussions with all three of them. Manya and myself have both been very intricately involved with trying to figure out which one we liked, didn't like, positives, negatives. So on that front, my basic philosophy is simply that the best software is the ones you know how to use. So basically saying, any of these three, I will know how to work and manage and figure out, right? So on that front, I'm happy to learn a new system and, and get going on it. There are some positives and negatives to each one, of course. G-Works and Tyler, so Tyler Technologies is our current company, G-Works is a new company. Those two are very good user interface. We really appreciated them.
Did you say what you just said again about the two?
G-Works, so that, in your, in your spreadsheet there, your graph, G-Works, the top two, G-Works and Tyler Pro, ERP Pro. Those two are the ones that we prefer in terms of like usability, fully web-based, the way the actual accounting software works, which I'm happy to get into. I'm sure everybody's enthralled with that, but yeah. So, so then Black Mountain is a little bit lower on that list in terms of, in terms of usability, functionality, things. Then you see, of course, there are the pricing. The big piece is in implementation cost, which you see there in the middle column. So I've highlighted in yellow where the, you know, advantage lays. So I'm boiling all this down to, I'm happy to discuss as much as possible, but boiling it all down to, we would appreciate going forward with G-Works. It's got the lowest annual right now and the lowest implementation or the second lowest implementation. So it does have the, the lowest total year one. Now, I will say that if, if it's not G-Works, I would really appreciate Tyler, which is a lot more expensive, but I was able to get Tyler to have their implementation over a three-year period. So that helps with budgetary pieces, yes.
Question I have is, it looks like the big difference between the two really is just the implementation. So if you're looking at a significant difference, you would only think that one is gonna spend more time and give you more? Is there any sense that's not the case here or?
So excellent question. I'll, I'll say without getting too far in the weeds, I can imagine Tyler may have a higher implementation because they are potentially gonna carry back years.
Are you saying it's gonna be over three years of what you're saying?
The implementation fee, the $47,000, if that, that fee would, we can pay it over three years.
This is the implementation part.
We will have support for all of them. So if the question is support, all of them will provide perfect support.
The whole point there is it's a three-year deal versus one-year deal, one year for implementation.
Council member Deutsch, I would focus specifically on the price at this point. Yeah, I was, I mainly said the, the three-year period because Tyler is our current provider. So I, I know how they work. Now, it is a completely different going from, you know, DOS to a web-based system theoretically or in. So, so that's where I believe also the implementation fee is quite high. It's like, my thought was, why is going from Tyler to Tyler so much, so much more expensive? I have no idea why, but my assumption is that it's simply going from this DOS, you know, old school based system, shoving it into the new web-based software, which takes a lot of effort apparently. G-Works implementation was around that number, but in discussions and in things like that, they were able to come down, which was, I think beneficial in my eyes because it's really hard to stomach a $48,000 implementation fee versus a $20,000 one.
So what we're thinking, smile the most?
Any one of these three.
I just want to clarify that both of these programs do support online payments for utility billing?
You got that right. They, all three of them have a utility billing online portal, forward-facing for all of our wonderful citizens out there, yes.
Yes. Cool. Any other questions?
I guess, I really would like to hear from Blake a little bit more on which one he would prefer, because we're here to support, we expect a high-quality product. We want the audits to get better and better and the financial management to continue down the path we're on. So these are all kind of negligible price differences, even the implementation, if one is superior in your estimation.
Excellent question, one I've been racking my brain with for the past three weeks. And so my, bottom line take on is what you see in the motion with G-Works. And, and it really simply is, I, I don't, I just don't want to spend an extra $30,000.
It's so odd that the company we're already with charges the most.
27, yeah, very odd to me as well.
That was, that was my primary concern as well, was you would think you'd want to keep your customers on board and Blake and I had this discussion, I had probably once a week for the last month, on why you would, why you would not consider that process and trying to convert there. There was no marketing towards us to actually go that direction. We had to seek them out, even though they're closing it down.
And, I mean, the prior implementation fee for all of these companies was quite high. And I kept saying, you gotta do something with the implementation fee, because it's outrageous.
Will we have our whole system backed up adequately during this?
For sure, yeah, yeah. It's currently backed up and all that. And, and on that note, my plan is to have like a, what do they call that? When it's like a system that's an archival, an archival system or something, a thing like that? Well, no, it's like, just, just a hard drive that's got all of our previous data on it that I can access.
Yeah.
It's an archival database of that.
All right.
Because I'm, I'm not sure about our certain prior year information, you know, being able to get accessed with these, which I, I have a feeling is not gonna be the case in any, any of these three.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
No, we have to open the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment on the potential new financial management software purchase? It's riveting. No, we're good. We can come back to council member Kaisler.
A motion to select G-Works as the city's financial management software and authorize finance director to enter into agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion by council member Kaisler, second by council member Deutsch. May we please have a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Motion carries, purchase away.
Excellent, thank you. And I did want to note, it is in the budget.
Oh, yeah, a really quick question.
Is there a contract length difference associated with these different companies?
A contract, sorry, language?
Duration.
Oh, yeah. Sheesh, I forget that. I know, I know G-Works is one year. So it is if we, if, if we displease of it, we can always say, thank you, but no thank you. Yeah, I think Tyler might be a little longer, so.
All right, thank you. Going back to new business, we have 14C, discussion on pre-agenda meeting scheduled for 2024. City manager Reeve.
Okay, so in discussion with staff and myself, one of the things I wanted to discuss with the council was if they were open to moving pre-agenda meetings to a Wednesday rather than a Thursday, just timing-wise, when like this agenda is quite big. If we do pre-agenda on Thursday and all, every, all the documents are due on Friday, it really puts a crunch on us. And so that's kind of why I wanted to have a discussion on that and take some guidance from the council.
the general public, pre-agenda meetings is two members of the city council meet ahead of these agendas to look at what the items are going to be and make sure that the items are pertinent, we're not overloading the agenda with a bunch of very large projects or controversial projects. And then we work with city staff to help with, you know, making those determinations. As you'll see in our agenda, our future agenda items are quite stacked with a number of items. And so that pre-agenda meeting is really essential to try and get those going and scheduled. And so that is what a pre-agenda meeting is. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on us switching our pre-agenda from Wednesdays to Wednesday? Mr. Arth.
Is it limited just to that issue?
Yes, this is the public comment for just the pre-agenda meeting schedule.
I wanted to speak to the protocols and the usefulness of the pre-agenda meeting.
You may, that's pertinent.
And, and as you said, if you look to item fifteen, future agenda items, it is quite stacked. That is, it may snow tomorrow, and yet on preview of coming attractions, snow removal policy and parking ordinance is way, way down on the list. Has this task been finished yet? Have the citizens weighed in? Are we at a place where everybody's happy? If we are, why don't we cross this off? If we haven't, why is it still sitting there? Fireworks ordinance, that should take about fifteen minutes. Same, 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 but it sits here forever. For Ron McLeod and myself, that are doing our best to save the historic district and the buildings, there was a time in 2014 when Mr. Kaisler was mayor and we had a joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission, we need to protect the historic district.
So Mr. Arth, if you can get it back to pre-agenda, so this is talking about pre-agenda meetings, not future agenda.
So in the pre-agenda meeting, under the protocols the council adopted, you are supposed to make your meetings as useful as possible. This meeting's going to be over in an hour and fifteen minutes and you have this huge list of things that, oh, you're just too busy to do. How's that working for the city? Not so good.
Thank you, Mr. Arth. Are there any other public comments on the pre-agenda meeting schedule for 2024? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move back into discussion. Do you need a formal motion to switch it from Wednesday or Thursday to Wednesdays or is direction given?
No, I think it's, it's actually in the protocol, so I believe we need a formal motion.
Okay, so I, I'll make the motion to update the protocols to schedule the pre-agenda meetings from Thursday to Wednesday at times that work for the council members who are participating in that pre-agenda. All right, motion by myself, second by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move into fourteen D, council reorganization, selection of mayor and vice mayor for 2024. So before we get into this item, just for protocol sake in the order, so we'll take mayor position first and then we will move to vice mayor. Once we have nominations for either of those positions, I'll open public comment. So there'll be two public comments. One will be for mayor, one will be for vice mayor, and then we will take our votes from there. And so I will now open the floor for the appointment of the mayor for the 2024 calendar year. Is there a nomination?
I move we nominate Michael Clarnow.
There's a motion and a second to nominate Michael Clarnow. Is there, do you accept?
I accept.
All right, are there any other nominations for mayor?
I greatly appreciate your leadership this past year and I would like to nominate you for an additional term.
That's very nice. Is there a second? Nope, that fails. And so we'll move into public comment. So we have one nomination for Councilmember Clarnow, assuming the mayoral position for the 2024 calendar year. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll come back. Oh, Mr. Arth. You got the slow rise today.
Because I care, because all of you are unpaid volunteers sitting in the seats I've sat in before, but you need to establish a sense of pride. I don't care who the mayor is, I don't care who the vice mayor is, but how could you put up with the sheriff sign torn up? How could you put up with plywood in the window in City Hall? How could you put up with the ceiling that's been like that since I moved to Dunsmere? You really do not have a sense of pride and that filters through everything you're going to do next year. You're going to get this report from your consultant and it's going to say, you need to do this and this and this, and you need to do it. That's going to be a sea change for this council and staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Arth. Are there any public comments related to the appointment of the mayoral position? Seeing none, we'll move back into a vote. So there is one nomination on the floor. We'll take a roll call vote to appoint Michael Clarnow to the seat of mayor for the 2024 calendar year.
Reverse.
No, it was, that was the way it was.
Oh, that's what it was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor? Might we hear from the candidate? Mr.?
If chosen, I'd be greatly honored and I look forward to working with everybody on the council and staff and members of the public to make the city the best it can be. And I'm planning on prioritizing fire readiness and working with Dustin on making sure that we have a home for all of our equipment at the new Public Works Building and continuing to support Cosmo's downtown revitalization.
Thank you. All right. Call the question.
I'm sorry, I'm still on the note Friday, what?
Councilmember Kaisler, second by Deutsch, she nominated Michael Clarnow as mayor.
Oh, no. Absolutely.
Kaisler. Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We switch. There we go.
Let's give our mayor, Lucchese, a round of applause for a year.
I'm going to sneak over to the corner. I have too many things. We didn't think this through. Oh, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I move Matthew Bryan to be vice mayor.
I'll second.
All right, we have a move and seconded. Is there any public comment?
Does Mr., does Councilmember Bryan accept?
You accept, yeah.
I'd be willing to support you as vice mayor. Thank you, appreciate the nomination.
All right.
Is there any public comment? That will move on to discussion. Discussion?
No discussion, call the vote.
All right, I call the vote.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Deutsch and a second by Councilmember Bryan.
Lucchese.
Lucchese.
I claimed it. It's fine.
I'm just speaking to nominate a governor for mayor.
For Bryan for vice. It's okay.
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you, everyone. I'll do my best to serve as Dunsmere's mayor of vice.
All right, and that, taken care of, we'll move on to IME, committee appointments
I believe there is one term on the finance committee that is expiring that needs to be decided today and, and I'm pretty sure the rest of them are still open.
All right, so we have one opening on the finance committee, which would be Matthew's term. I would like to start out by nominating Matthew Bryan to continue on with the finance committee.
You?
I'm interested in continuing to serve if no one else is. I think it's a great institution for any council member to participate in, so if anyone else would like to, I'm looking to open to that as well.
I would second the nomination for Councilmember Bryan. I don't want to be on that committee. I'm good.
There you go.
All right.
You're stuck with me, Blake.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Do you want to open it up for a public comment?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Do we think we have four of these?
We don't do it for each of them, that, that's the one that is expiring. And then I think what I would suggest is we just open up the rest of the committees if anyone wants to switch out or needs to switch out.
Okay, that makes sense. So I would like to open up, yeah, the rest of the committees if anyone would like to make a change. Any changes that anyone would like to make or any swaps out? Yes, Dustin?
I, I was going to place on the future agenda items for food for thought, ad hoc committee to review city code to be more business-friendly and citizen-friendly. As I'm now taking on the role of the planner, I've realized how cumbersome and I've also received multiple concerns from business owners. So I, because it's a committee, I thought I'd bring it up now.
I'm strongly in support of an ad hoc committee to do code. I just, we've been talking about this for years. I was told the cost was prohibitive as far as that goes, but if we can whittle away at the bad ones, I think that might be something, well, are you envisioning a committee of council members to work with city staff?
Yeah, just, yeah, two council members and city staff.
I, I recommend, and I, I recommend the mayor since he's the liaison for the chamber and I'm on the chamber, so if you want, I would work with you on that unless somebody else wants it more.
I'd be interested in being on it.
So again, for procedure today, this item is not on the agenda. It'll be on for the next agenda for formation and discussion.
Yeah, the, the history of the council in recent years with committees has been to clearly define and charter each committee when possible. So if we just get a little written statement with permission.
But I think, I think it is important to bring up in case someone wants to volunteer for that. They may not want to volunteer for their other committees to open up time. So just, I think it's a good point to bring up. And then we do still need to do public comment.
All right, and that will move to public comment.
Mr.?
I think the committee system for the city of Dunsmere is broken. And it's sad because in any governmental organization, the committee system from Congress to the state of California to the local level, you get a lot of work done in committees. And when Matthew and Juliana and I started out, I remember working with Juliana to write the disaster DPAC resolution, knowing the city wasn't going to do it. And under citizen leadership, that committee met, it met its mandate and it did a lot of good for our community. Here, we have an airport committee, it never meets. We have a solid waste committee, it never meets. We have a finance committee that's going backwards and what's the use? Why are you going to populate committees that never meet, have no mandates, have no deliverables? It will turn into another wasted year without leadership to take the two-year budget and do vision and planning and budgeting and move the city forward. But that has not happened in the last several years. I believe we're going backwards and it's on all of you. You seem to be completely comfortable not meeting and doing what you agree to do as committee members or committee leaders, and that's a shame.
Any other public comment? For those on Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item and move to discussion.
So I'll call the question on the reappointment of Councilmember Bryan to the finance committee for a two-year term. So I believe there was a motion and a second.
There was a motion, yeah, there was been a motion and a second to have Councilmember Bryan continue on with the seat on the finance committee.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, and with that, we move on to item number fifteen, future agenda items.
Good. So I did, I brought up the ad hoc committee just because we were discussing committees, but I can bring that back to the next meeting if that's something you guys are in favor of. Good.
And just a point of clarification, you do have the, the housing element funding and future agenda items, but I believe that we figured that out, that we do still have time and budget for that.
Mr. Arth, before you leave, sir, I say this with all due respect, you, you, you accuse us of that.
Were you relaxed, huh?
Myself. I built and installed at Littleford Library, I painted the ballpark, I painted the library, I've done the grandstands, I do the town decorations, I play Santa Claus, I play the Easter Bunny. Well, tell me, I don't mind applying to my town.
Mr. Kaisler, let's keep this for another time outside of the council meeting. All right, any other future agenda items?
I think we have a pretty full play day.
Yep.
So, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.